Good evening, everybody. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rule call. Would you please mark that all members are present? Oh, excuse me, I have to do the consent agenda first, don't I?
You just do it in order, John, so you'll just note rule call and then conflict of interest.
Okay. Two point two, conflicts of interest. Anyone need to disclose?
I would like to note my ongoing disclosure for a conflict I've already disclosed as a first premier bank employee.
Okay. That is noted. Two point three, review and approval of the agenda.
Do you like a motion?
I'll take, I'll entertain a motion.
I move we approve the agenda.
Okay. Motion by Jean.
Second.
Second by Carrie. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Two point four, approval of the minutes of the July fourteenth, twenty twenty-five meeting. Entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Okay. Motion by Carrie.
Second.
Second by Jean. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Motion carried. Financial reports for July of twenty twenty-five.
Thank you. The general fund operation received the first monthly state aid payment in the estimated amount of just over a million dollars. This figure will be adjusted once the district's twenty-five, twenty-six enrollment is finalized. Additional federal and state revenue totaling four hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars was also received, primarily from telephone gross receipts and federal title allocations. As typical for July, expenditures exceeded revenues. Major expenditures this month included the annual renewal of liability and workers' compensation insurance at five hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars, as well as a hundred and nine thousand dollars payment to security benefit for early retirement obligations. The fund's ending cash balance stands at eight point four million dollars, representing an anticipated decrease compared to the prior year. Capital Outlay received minimal revenue totaling fifty thousand eight hundred and sixty-six dollars and included typical July property tax collections, interest income, and proceeds from an insurance claim. Expenditures consisted of one point three million in debt service payments and five hundred and fifteen thousand towards ongoing construction of the athletic complex. The fund's ending cash balance of three point five million reflects an anticipated decrease from the prior year driven by the planned spend down of capital outlay certificate proceeds supporting the athletic complex project. The special education fund reported that expenditures outpaced revenue in July as typical due to limited revenue and timing of taxes. Despite this, the fund's ending cash balance stands at three point four million and is an improvement over the previous years. L E T C received multiple revenue sources this month, including four hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars in state allocations. Total distribution, distribusments for the month amounted to four point seven million and included six hundred and forty thousand dollars for the annual renewal of liability and workers' compensation insurance, a hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars for property, for a property purchase, significant equipment acquisitions for the surgical technology program, and three hundred and eighteen thousand dollars in progress payments for boiler and HVAC updates. The fund's ending cash balance is just over five million dollars and represents an increase compared to the same period last year. Enterprise operations continue to operate at appropriate levels to accommodate their corresponding funds. Activity will gear up in August with the startup of school. Employee benefit trust had premiums exceed the claims and administrative costs during the month. This is typical as the district's ten-month employees do not contribute to the plan during the month of July and August. As a result, the fund's ending cash position reflects a decrease. However, this trend is expected to stabilize beginning in September when premium increase goes into effect with the start of the new payroll cycle and regular employee contributions resume. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you want.
Any questions? Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve the financial report.
And no motion is needed for that, John.
That's correct. Yep.
Okay. This is typically when we have student-staff recognition. Since it's been summer for a couple of months, we don't have any right now for this month, but I would like to introduce the board to our new administrator this year. So, the switches we had with Deb Frederickson retiring from our Director of Technology, that meant that Mr. Cruz, Tim Cruz, is now our Director of Technology. Mr. Cruz, hello. And that moved Dr. Shannon Knopf over from McKinley to the intermediate school. She is our Watertown Intermediate School Principal. Hello, Dr. Knopf. And then Emily Hatton, who had been the intermediate school assistant principal, moved to McKinley to become the McKinley Early Childhood Principal. And that freed up Emily's position over at the intermediate school. So, come on up here, Mr. Knopf. We, we recognize the rest of them, but we want to get you on camera too. But this is Aaron Knopf. He is first year with us, formerly a teacher in Rapid City in Sioux Falls. Wife and daughter. One?
One and a half.
Ish?
Yeah.
So, Mr. Knopf, here's the board.
Super excited to be here.
Really glad you're here.
Thank you. Thanks.
All right. Thank you for coming tonight.
You got an ovation. It was not a standing ovation, but still an ovation. Discussion items, three point one. Any public input on agenda or non-agenda items for L E T C? Okay. Let's move on to the action items for L E T C. Four point one, personnel.
Good evening. Tonight, we've got three resignations for your consideration, and I would seek the board's approval as those are presented.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
Move that we approve item four point one point one, resignations.
Okay. I have a motion.
Second.
Okay. Second by Bailey. Questions, comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Resignations accepted.
Very good. Next item is a variety of contract recommendations for your consideration. This includes full-time staff that will start here with the new school year and a variety of workshops and professional development that took place over the summer months. We also have a small variety of adjunct instructor and corporate education contracts for your consideration. I stand open for any questions that you have, but would recommend your approval as those are presented.
Okay. Entertain a motion for those contract recommendations.
I move that we approve the contract recommendations as presented.
Okay. Motion by Bailey.
Second.
Second by Rochelle. Questions or comments?
Could you explain online refresher workshops?
Yeah. So, the online refresher workshop was hosted at the end of July, and it's a voluntary workshop for staff who have both in-person and online course assignments. About a year and a half ago, we recognized that our withdrawals from the college were at a higher rate for students who were in an online class than those who were in person. And so, we've been working to train and support those teachers who have online assignments. This was a workshop that helped in that way.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Four point two, property.
Very good. First item for your consideration is authority to purchase fleet vehicles for the heavy equipment operator program and building trades. We recommend the board accept the loan qualifying bid from Watertown Ford Chrysler for a twenty twenty-one Ford F three fifty pickup at a cost of fifty-one thousand one hundred and eighty-nine dollars. That will support the heavy equipment operator program. And then, we received no qualifying bids for the building trades fleet. So, would ask for your approval to purchase two fleet vehicles at a total price of fifty thousand dollars for those two pickups. All of that is budgeted for in our F Y twenty-six fleet budget.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve the authority to purchase.
I move that we approve authority to purchase fleet vehicles as presented and explained.
Okay. Motion by Jean.
Second.
Okay. Second by Carrie. Any questions, comments? The F three fifty, that's the really big one, isn't it?
It is. Our lead instructor for heavy equipment has a lot of responsibility in going to different building sites and often taking equipment along with, and so towing capacity and a little more horsepower is pretty important for that program.
That must be a diesel, I would guess.
Yes.
Yeah.
I'd have to look into the details.
Yeah, it is. I've got it.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah. That appears to be a pretty good price for.
Definitely.
Those pickups are extremely expensive.
Our last one finally bit the dust after two hundred and sixty-four thousand miles.
Well, let's hope for the same mileage on this one. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Motion carried. Four point two point two.
Before you is lease agreement for consideration. This is where our commercial driver's license trainees do their maneuvering in a, an area just on the southeast side of Watertown at thirty-three oh one Ninth Avenue Southwest. It's a lease agreement with Greater Plains Company that will run from July first through May thirty-first of twenty twenty-six, so the academic year, for a total price of eighteen thousand nine twenty-four oh four. And just want to share our thanks with the Greater Plains Company for the support that they've given to our commercial driver's license program over the years and the partnership that we've had for this ground.
Okay. Entertain a motion for the approval of four point two point two.
I'll make a motion to consider the lease agreement for the licensing training for the commercial drivers.
Okay. Motion by Carrie.
Second.
Second by Jean. Any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Four point two point three.
Thank you. Before you are three lease agreements with the city of Watertown for airport hangars. This supports our professional pilot program. Two of the hangars come at a rental of two hundred and forty dollars per month, one of the hangars at a hundred and seventy-five dollars per month. And these are month-to-month leases. Stand by for any questions that you may have, but would recommend your approval as those are presented.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve this, this item.
I move we approve the lease agreement for the airport T hangars as explained.
Okay. Motion by Jean.
Second.
Second by Carrie. Any questions or comments? What, I, I know it's for the air, or it's the aircraft program, but what are the hangars used for? Storage of planes?
Yeah. Storage of planes. The Cessnas, the small planes that our students train in, don't weather well outside, and so being protected in these hangars is a pretty important part of keeping everything in working order and reliability of students being scheduled to fly so they have easy access to those of the hangars from the city.
Okay. That would seem like money well spent. Any other questions or comments?
As part of that lease, do we pay utilities or is that covered in the lease?
That is a great question. I can follow up on that. I believe that that's a total price all in, and I know that there's lights to all of those hangars, electricity with the, the overhead doors, so I assume it's all included. I'll follow up if that's any difference.
Okay. Just curious. Thank you.
You're correct. That's correct. Okay. Thanks Heidi for the help there. Phone a friend.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Motion carried. Four point two point four, surplus property equipment.
Before you is a surplus property resolution for a skid loader out of our building trades program to be sold or traded.
Okay. Entertain a motion to approve four point two point four.
Second.
By Carrie, second by Jean. Questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Good. Thank you all.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item five point one, public input on agenda or non-agenda items. So, is there anybody from the public? We'll just identify. Five point two, Northeast Tech High School report.
Yes. Reminder for our board members on the Northeast Tech Board, that meeting is next Wednesday, the twentieth, at five forty-five.
Okay. Five point three, first reading of district policies.
Yes. Five point three point one, D F K, the Endowment Fund. Recommending this be struck from our policy manual. This related to endowment funds, say a scholarship that existed prior to Arrow Ed. And so, at this point in time, any of those type of requests would be pushed to Arrow Ed, so we do not feel it is needed for the district to have this particular policy. So, recommend deleting that.
And the first reading, we take no action on these items?
Correct. This would be.
Next month will be our.
Next week, it would have just deleted in watermark, and that would be our cue that if you vote to approve it next month, it would be gone. D I, fiscal accounting and reporting. In our review of the Associated School Board model policies, they had a much simpler version that covered all the necessary components, so recommending swapping our longer policy for the policy in red. The G A S P, the Governmental Accounting Standards Board requirements, essentially account for anything else that was in there, and those are updated. So, would be easier to just refer to the G A S P than specific items that are in the old policy. And then, five point three point three, D I E, the audit. No changes recommended there, just a review and a reminder to the board and the public. We are reviewed in an audit every fiscal year. That is via state law, so we do, do that. And then educators are afforded four oh three Bs, which are tax-sheltered annuities. That's five point three point four, D L B. That has been in place for quite some time. No changes recommended there. So, those would all be first, first readings, brought back next month.
Okay. So, five point four, summer curriculum updates. And that would be Tricia.
That would be me. Thank you for having me. Thank you. I'm excited to talk about the work that's been happening all summer. It's kind of a reflection of last school year through summer, launching into the next school year. It's kind of a culmination of all the important things. So, I'm going to just start with reviewing the purpose of the curriculum work that we do. It can feel like teaching, there's an opinion that teaching might be just a nine-month job, but really, there's a lot of things that happen through the summer in, and curriculum work is one of those really important pieces. This is different than the daily work that teachers would do to prepare for students the next day, the next unit. That day-to-day lesson planning is ongoing throughout the school year, but our curriculum work in the summer really has these goals, and that is just to create our best learning opportunities and to think programmatically about what our students experience as they work K through twelve, pre-K through twelve, all, all the way through. Are we providing them the best opportunities in all of our content areas? So, when we focus on curriculum, we really try to focus on that research base and make sure that we are doing, implementing best practices at all times. We want to make sure that our coverage and our content matches the standards and that all of our staff are aware of the changes that have happened within that. We want there to be consistency for students so that they have similar experiences as they work through our grades. We want quality instruction at all times and really that responsiveness, not just to roll over what we've been doing, but to reflect upon it and make changes in response to all of those needs. So, the products that we produce as part of that curriculum process really would be to begin with instructional practices, like thinking about what meets student needs the best. We select our textbooks and materials, licenses, any of those support materials that can help students to achieve. We develop a curriculum map, which is really a high-level picture of, a snapshot of what is learned within a course. So, think of one to two pages where it just captures the big ideas of what the major units are, how long to spend on each piece, so that someone coming in can just at a glance see what a course might look like. We call that our curriculum map. We create a pacing guide or some sort of a calendar to show the sequencing and the length, because the length that we, of time devoted to a particular topic really emphasizes the priority within our instruction. The more time something gets, the more important it is. And so, we really have to be judicious about how time is allocated to our different content areas, to our topics within those contents. And then, we work on our course selection and sequencing of courses to make sure that we are revising any course offerings as needed. And then, the final step would be to work on common assessments, and how do we ensure that students are coming with the same expectations, they're meeting that, those same criteria? Our cycle is, we follow the state adoption cycle. So, as the state adopts new curriculum, we try to match our sequence to that. Sometimes, things jump around, and we have to try to be responsive to that. But it is a seven-year cycle. That determines our purchases and our budget. So, when we purchase for a curriculum area, we try to make the major purchases that will last the life of that adoption, because it's, it's a devoted budgetary purchase. And any major revisions would happen at that time. We try not to make additional changes throughout that cycle, because we want it to play out and to, to live out the things that we have decided upon within that review process. It takes two-plus years for that process in each content area, because we begin with reflections on what has been happening, where we want to go. It involves representatives from all the grades and all the coursework within those grades. It really is that higher level view of instruction. It should not be an individual decision, but really, like I said, programmatically, are we making decisions in the best interest of all students, no matter who's teaching the course? At any point, we know that staff can turn over, courses can be reassigned. So, we really are trying to do kind of that high-level planning. The next slide will show the sequence of courses that are upcoming. So, we, this last school year was our math year one. So, we began that work in the summer of twenty-three, and we launched it last fall. You can see that this coming fall, we will launch social studies along with those Oshari Shakawin standards. And technology standards have been adopted by the state, and so we know we have some work to continue to look at those. But those are the three content that would be new this year. English Language Arts is a huge adoption, so I'll talk about that as we go through some of the work that is upcoming. We have taken two years on the K six side of that, just to get all of the components in place. And then, the next chunk would be, you can see, would be personal finance, business, health, P E, in fact, it's kind of all jammed into that year. So, math, science, social studies, language arts would be the core four that affect all of our K six. And then, our departments at the secondary levels have those additional electives and other areas. As I was kind of reviewing, I realized this might not make sense to you. In my head, this makes sense, because this past year, we were launching math. We were in year two of science. We were beginning our study of language arts, and we were preparing to adopt social studies. So, that's kind of my perspective as I'm going to go through those different content areas. But all of that is playing out at the same time. So, as we are thinking about what's coming up, we're also reflecting on how's what we just put into place going and what do we have to get ready for next. And so, we were in the launch year of math this last school year, twenty-four, twenty-five. At the K six level, we implemented illustrative math as our math program. It really, we provided a heavy emphasis on conceptual understanding and really developing the idea of what do, what do all of those pieces of math mean? How do they work together? How can we build on what we know to understand what we don't know? We've been doing ongoing training for staff. We called those our review preview meetings, and you may hear me talk about that through our social studies pieces too, because we found that as a model that has been a nice way to support staff throughout the school year. So, once a month, they, we have a review preview meeting as a grade level. We have, you know, first grades at three different sites, second grades at three different sites. So, to be able to pull them together and, and talk about what's upcoming and reflect on what we've been doing and how it's been going, those have been helpful. That, those are led by our curriculum reps, so the teachers within those content areas and our instructional coaches. In math, Michelle Wells has been an invaluable source of support. She's really dug into our content, been able to support staff on the ground, because she's right there with them. And so, that has been very helpful in the implementation of that new program at our K six level. At seven eight, they are using the McGrath Reveal product. We had McGrath as our middle school program before, but it's a revised, revised program that they adopted this last year. So, it has a new focus. It has some, many of the same pieces. It's the same company, so pieces of it do feel familiar. But it does have some different components that we really chose to emphasize based on our math work that we did throughout that study. They are using and will use Alex Math as support for that program next year. They are aligned, and so when they know they're in unit eight, for instance, then Alex can supply skills for unit eight. They do match, they're from the same company as a support for that program. We've really tried to focus and emphasize that stronger connection to the high school math. We know that students at eighth grade are either in pre-algebra, getting ready to take algebra as a ninth grader, or they're in algebra as an eighth grader earning high school credit. And so, we need to make sure that those courses are very aligned, and that when we issue an Algebra One credit, doesn't matter if it comes from the ninth, eighth-grade teachers, the ninth-grade teachers, the accelerated classes, they all have to offer those same components. And so, that's been a focus of our seven eight and nine twelve work, is to make that connection stronger. At the high school level, we, they implemented McGrath Reveal as well. Our bigger focus, and they also had used McGrath before, so there were pieces that were familiar and pieces that are, that are new. We really tried to emphasize those, the discourse and the questioning techniques that we had studied within our math study group. We did make some changes to their courses. And so, this past year was an implementation year for some of those new changes in courses within the math department. So, we created an accelerated Algebra One course. We revised our Algebra Two. We had, we tried to implement it with more financial considerations, and so trying to make it more real-world for that level of math student. So, Algebra Two had some significant revisions this last year. Our Algebra Two course used to be able to offer, be offered for dual credit, and that was no longer possible. And so, we created a college algebra course in addition to, that would be the next level, a fourth-year math, they would call that. And so, this was the implementation year of that as a new course. And then, we added an intro to statistics. We have always had a college statistics course, but this would be more of a high school-level statistics that would prepare a student to be able to take that course in college if they choose to. So, it just was a new offering to kind of expand opportunities for our students. Our depart, department coursework within the high school math department was really to focus on, we spent a lot of time talking about course expectations and assessments, really trying to align people who teach the same course, kind of having those similar expectations, and then living out those different course changes. All of that work was centered around these effective teaching practices that come from the National Council for Teachers of Mathematics. You've seen this list before, but we try to keep putting this in front of our staff to talk about, these are the things we want to be seeing within instruction, putting it in front of our principals to say, this is what we're looking for as we evaluate as well, because these would be the, the most successful practices that have been identified. So, the next major content area is social studies. So, we are heading into our adoption year for social studies. So, we spent the last year and a half kind of on that countdown, knowing it was coming, knowing that the standards had been approved by the state, but also knowing that they were significantly different than what we have been teaching and trying to prepare for that change. So, on, our focus at each of the levels has been to really, at the elementary level, understand the new standards, because they are very different than what we have been teaching at those levels. And so, just trying to calm the waters a little bit and make sure staff know that we are, we have materials in mind, we have things in place, we're going to support each other through the changes, so that it doesn't feel so overwhelming. And I think we're in a good spot for that. I'll, I'll share some of the steps that we've taken. At the middle school, the focus was really shifting content, because their eighth-grade content really moved to seventh grade. And so, it's kind of sharing of things between that, those two grade levels. And at the high school, it's really accommodating that expanded content. Their standards really, can't think of another word for expanded, really did that, because there's just more to cover. And so, trying to make sure that we had a place for each of those standards to live. If you have looked at the social studies standards, this is a graphic that I keep going back to, because it really shows where the different contents have landed and what the grade levels are responsible for. And in one look, it shows you kind of how different things are than what they have been in the past. We need to understand how that repetition works and that when students are hearing things, it may be the first time, but it may also be the second or third time. And how can we make sure that that depth of standard and depth of knowledge is differentiated? Because there's nothing a teacher hates hearing more than, we've done this before, we've seen that before, we've read that before. So we want to make sure that it feels fresh and that there's a, you know, a different perspective at each of the times that a student experiences exposure to the concepts. So our elementary focus, heading into the school year and our summer work has really focused on the product of Studies Weekly. I'm going to just skip a slide first. This is what Studies Weekly looks like. I've shared this before, but you'll notice there's a couple of new pieces. We've also tagged on the early childhood version and the junior kindergarten will utilize it as well, and then the sixth grade. And so the South Dakota Studies Weekly are the six in the middle and the three on the outsides are kind of those extra layers that we've added in to keep our students in that same platform through that entire series. We can support our staff better and kind of know where they are and how to use the materials because they will be in a similar product. But trying to determine how those materials will be used has been a major focus. So really it is understanding those standards, the sequence of them, the depth, the repetition, and particularly the transition. We need transition plans because many of the standards do repeat. So where's the emphasis going to be? Who's going to take which parts of the stories? Because many of it, many of the concepts are story-driven. So understanding that Thomas Jefferson's going to come up in every grade, but who's going to take which pieces of his life to make sure that our students are exposed to kind of the breadth of his experiences. We also don't want there to be overlap or miss, missing skills as we do that. And so coming up with those launch plans, our social studies committee, we had two reps from each grade that worked on looking at those plans and coming up with a plan to launch it. And I have science reference there because this will really impact our science instruction as well. Until now, or at our elementary levels, we've had science content to cover, social studies content to cover, but teachers were able to kind of flex those according to their own schedules or seasonally. Like different teachers believe it works better in different ways. But in order to support the social studies, we will now have to align those so that they're all hitting the same social studies unit at the same time. So we can do some of that pre-support work before they get there and then they'll do a science unit. So we're going to alternate between science and social studies and try to divide the time very reasonably between them so that we can hit the major concepts in the right proportions so that we're able to provide that support and then align our instruction in that way. I shared about those review preview meetings that we did for math last year. We're going to continue that structure for social studies. So once a month, the elementary social studies reps will review the units they've come off of, what worked? What did we struggle with? Did anybody find any great resources we should share? And then preview what's coming up, providing some of that background. The Studies Weekly does have some podcasts and videos and readings that teachers can do, but in the busyness of it all, that can be difficult to devote time to. So by having that review preview meeting, those reps can do some of that pre-work and, and do some of the explanation for their peers and really help them be ready for what is, what the upcoming skills will be. At the middle school, our focus really is all American history. We used to do more geography in seventh grade and that has been divvied out into the different grade levels. And all of seventh grade will be 1492 to 1877. That used to live in the eighth grade and it's now seventh grade. And then adding the 1877 to 2008, that would have been the focus of more of our high school and now that is our eighth grade. And so for two years, our middle school students will cover the gamut of American history. And so we wanted to, we held those days, that time, we met with seven, eight, and eleven, which is where American history lives at the high school in our district, to be able to set some of that boundary, so those discussions. So we talked about, you know, what are you going to emphasize within that unit? What do we think are the major concepts that really have to be covered within there? And then just providing that support to each other. So we had some really good conversations between the two level, two grade, two building levels surrounding history on that. And then at the high school, we focused on just course development. So we've been using the TCI materials. These are the TCI textbooks that we actually had purchased for this past year. We were already using them. So we have some experience with that. We'll continue to kind of revise how those are being used, but we now all use this same textbook series at the high school level. So we've been implementing that and we'll continue that work. We continue to explore that division of standards because there's added standards to the list. So where can they fit so that we're not doing a lot of repetition? We revised the course sequence. You know that we have made some adjustments and I will talk about that in our next slide. And then developing the South Dakota Native American Studies course and the development of common assessments. So. This one, you can see, these are the courses that were in the registration handbook for students to register this past spring. And so these are the courses that are being hosted this fall. We had great response to our different electives. We're able to host at least two sections of all of the electives that are on that list. And so we have, we feel like we have good representation for student needs. We also added that South Dakota Native American Studies course. It will be required from our, for our freshmen going on, but it became an elective for students in 10 through 12 this year. We do have eight sections of that course and at least two worth, two students' worth were chosen as elective. So we feel like that was a good offering that students really responded well to, that we have been able to fill a number of students. We have almost 60 upper-class students that are taking that course. So good response to that. Our goal really, as we develop our course, our high school courses, is to give each grade or each course its own identity to make sure that it is something unique for student experience. So we really tried to clarify what those new standards are going to be so that teachers could identify and claim those boundaries. We want to build the capacity of our course teams, meaning teachers who teach the same course should be aligned and have some common expectations of students. We want them to emphasize some of the same pieces. They don't have to teach it in the same way, but they should have the same end product. So the idea would be, we want some, some assessments that would be aligned between the different courses. Really, our amazing staff need to learn from each other and can benefit from kind of those shared experiences. And so that's really the value of a district our size is that we have that potential to do those collaborations. And so just continuing to capitalize upon that. And then the last bullet is to consider our reading and writing expectations. So this slide shows the different writing expectations that are built within the social studies standards themselves. There have always been reading and writing standards within the content areas, but these are specifically within the social studies set of standards. And so they feel more ownership of them. It's not that our students didn't read and write before, but now it is called out specifically what styles of writing they will try and kind of the length. It's supposed to be kind of a major task. And so we are continuing to work on what those will look like within those courses and pulling on some of the expertise of our, hoping to use, you know, our librarian and some of our support for developing those reading and writing expectations. So the next major content area was English and Language Arts. It is year one of study and we actually started it in the fall. And I'm, I'm going to just give you a little preview because there's so many things, so many content areas within Language Arts that I, I don't think you want to listen to me all night. And so I will come back and we can do some Language Arts delivery, but just the overview of what we have done so far is that we, the first thing we decided after we did some surveying of staff, talking as departments, talking as grade levels, just kind of talking with staff about, what is it that we need to focus on the most? Because Language Arts includes writing and reading, but also vocabulary and grammar and phonics and phonemic awareness and handwriting and speaking and listening and all of those pieces all wrapped into that same set of standards. And so we cannot focus on all of it at one time. And so where did we think our biggest bang for our buck would be? And knowing that we continue to build our capacity in all of these areas, where should we start our study? We have been continuing to work on implementing the science of reading concepts within all of our levels, but particularly at our elementary levels with the phonics and phonemic awareness. That is an emphasis that we know that we will continue to have and are, are working on. The feedback from staff really has been that our strongest areas have been our reading and literature and our least strong, or the, the place where they feel like they want the most support. The feedback was that that would be writing and just knowing how to implement some of those writing pieces within their content. And so typically, the last time we adopted, we went the other direction. This year, this cycle, we decided to start with writing because sometimes by the end, your brain is full. And so we decided to start with writing and vocabulary, which would then trickle into the grammar pieces. We know the phonemic awareness and phonics. We've been working on it and we will continue. That's, we've been working on that this summer. And then getting into the reading and literature. And so by turning that around, we started with some study groups. So in the spring, we began with some bite-sized pieces. We hosted some online courses, particularly a reading and vocabulary, or I'm sorry, a writing study. We did, Jen Brist, our instructional coach, taught two courses. It was a hybrid. You could come in person or you could do it online. And they did it after school for a number of weeks to put in the required hours. But we ran an early childhood kindergarten course and we ran a first through 12 course to really hit kind of some of the foundational pieces of writing and then spilling into that grammar vocabulary, Language Arts pieces. And our goal was really to grow the capacity of our group. We had not named our, our ELA committee at that point, but we wanted anybody to feel welcome to come and study and, and get some background in these areas. And we had good response to those courses. And from that, we did name our committee work that began the Language Arts on the elementary side secondary. And we just take the entire department because everybody needs to know all the things. But at our elementary, we have representatives within there. And so we really focused on building that capacity. And so what I would say is our ELA work is going to be continued. I'll continue to report to you on it. But in terms of more information right now, like there's just so much content-wise that I think would be a good foundation for you that I'd prefer to, to share more about that as we go. Our ad team has, we have decided to commit, you know, strong resources to Language Arts, knowing that this is coming and that we will, it will consist of different changes throughout the year. So we're going to continue to revisit that. I do want to share kind of the overview of what else was happening all summer. Like that was just some of the tasks that we were doing, but just to show you how those played out in terms of days on a calendar maybe, we offered these eight courses as online offerings for credit. To earn a graduate credit, you have to put in 15 hours of coursework, including, in addition to like any readings or assignments or things. So we, we offered these eight. These replaced really our summer academy. We did not host an in-person summer academy. We just haven't had as much interest probably since COVID. It's, it just was kind of falling away. So we tried to come up with more flexible options that staff might respond to. And so you'll see that there's some behavior pieces, there's some grading pieces, there's some writing and Language Arts pieces in particular. The generation notification was based in, on the book, The Anxious Generation, pulled ideas from that. And so we tried to pick things that would represent lots of different areas. Last summer, many of them were math because we were heading into math. So it usually is tipped in the favor of whatever is upcoming next. But these were the eight that we offered. And then in addition to that, each month, we had a number of different meetings and days happening. So right after school got out in May, we jumped right in. We started developing that South Dakota course, knowing they needed kind of time in the summer to devote to that. We did our two days of K-12 language work, trying to just align some of those concepts and divide out those standards. And we separated purposely from the work we did in July around more of the reading concepts and the phonics work that happened in July because we wanted the brain space to be separate. We did some sheltered work surrounding, we added sheltered Algebra II and sheltered geometry for next year as well as sheltered the English X. And so knowing that those were also courses to be developed, they started that work in May. And then our admin did some reunification training for our safety committee. In June, we sent a few people to the Literacy Summit in Sioux Falls. It was a really good conference, so hopefully they will continue that and we can send more people to it. We did have some of our own staff present at it and it was well-received. So that happened in very early June. Our Mentor Academy happened, the state hosts that. We sent about 60 people. It was virtual this year, but about 60 of our staff participated in that virtual academy. And then we hosted our grade levels. So we had one day each for pre-K through grade six. That really is an important time for the team to kind of connect with each other and get on the same page. We did our seven-12 American History work. We did our one-through-six math committee work. We did our math department work from the high school and we did our K six social studies launch, kind of preparing how we were going to roll out the Studies Weekly. These were the days that we met, but then they had additional tasks to carry forward in terms of development of materials and planning for those sessions for their peers. In July, we had nine-through-12 social studies. We spent three days with the high school. It was reading and, and literature, but we also wrapped in our, came back to our writing and said, how can we tie those two together and kind of make them more seamless? Spent some time with our interventionists, working on our interventions and our tier-two support for students. We worked with seven-12, seven-eight math and then our literacy work for K six and our phonics work for pre-K through two. And now it's already August, so we have hosted four days of New Teacher Academy. We've done our mentor training and our kickoffs. We have not quite as many pairs this year as we have in the past, but still a sizable group, probably 45 is to 50 people. I'd have to recount them. We did an illustrative math training day. We did a sped day, a specialized day. We trained PSYOP, which is our English language learning strategies. It's a two-day training. And we have tried to maintain all of our staff at our student, at our buildings that have ESL students. We want them all trained in PSYOP. And so every summer, we've committed to re-hosting that so we can get all of our new staff through that training, trained for medication delivery. And we will host a new para-training. Our ad team did a Boys Town training. And then we're just rolling right into pre-service needs. So my ending slide is just to say, is it time for school yet? Because that's a lot. That's what I've been up to all summer is kind of working with these various groups. It's really rewarding to see the staff that we have and, and the passion they have for the different areas that they get involved in. And hopefully that can carry over to their colleagues and teammates and they can share that expertise and kind of share the load. Because it's a heavy job to take on, these are three major contents within three years and the year before that was the fourth. So we, we've got a big ask of our staff. So that's what we've been up to.
Questions for G, or for Tricia from anybody?
Sure. Board, how about some homework? Okay. I recommend that you either get physical copies of the standards, at least peruse them, skim them. This happens to be the Native American one of Shetay Shakowee, which means the seven council players. And this will be the new high school curriculum. Here's the social studies standards, a little hefty, but you can skim it quite rapidly. Here's the English language standards, the science standards. They're all in the South Dakota Department of Education website. But you can get physical copies as well. So at least you're familiar with what is the starting base for knowledge. Again, these are not just the end base of knowledge. It also recommends that students be taught above and beyond what's there. Textbook selection and materials. So do teachers recommend different companies, textbooks that they've seen?
Typically, that is a piece of our discussion is what is it that we want to look at? And I, the reps will often provide samples for us to kind of have a sneak peek. And then we typically would bring in like full-blown samples of a few because we couldn't, then we don't have anywhere to house the number of samples that we could get. And so we try to narrow it based on the sneak peek we've done and what we've been hearing. Like with math, we brought in three companies for, one was virtual, to do a formal presentation where the committee can dig in and kind of hear from specific questions. With social studies, we took what the state offered for elementary. So it just depends on the content area and what's out there.
Yeah. Do you ever check to see what other schools are using, like particularly schools that score very high in certain areas?
The curriculum directors, that committee meets and we maintain a document that shows all the content areas what each school uses. And so we'd connect at least once. And so we'd connect at least once a month on various topics. And so that's a resource that we maintain.
Yeah, I know you all talk to each other, which is great. So when we make a purchase, different companies, I'm sure, have different contract stipulations. So do we pay generally for a contract all at once to cover the entire seven years or write the huge check right away?
Typically, we do because of that seven-year cycle. Because the money for math is here this year and then next year, it's social studies money and the next year, it's language arts money. And so it used to be that a textbook would last and that's all you needed for that seven years. And now it's licensing and training and other things that do go on through the life. So we try to anticipate what will be needed during those seven years. But you get a better rate if you purchase for multiple years and that's when our district has budgeted the money for that area. So typically, we do purchase for the life of the cycle.
Is there an out in the contract? Let's say we're not happy with a certain curriculum?
We love our curriculum.
Well, let's let's just say some pieces of it aren't working and we might want to break the contract or
That hasn't really been my experience. I don't know what that would take.
Okay. Be different companies, different
Yeah.
Yeah. So moving on. Different curriculum cycles, we want to do some thinking about what students aren't learning and how they're learning. And it has to do with, particularly on K-6, has to do with math that either emphasizes concepts or math that emphasizes, and there's two terms here, numeracy or procedure. Almost everybody in this room learned by numeracy or procedure. Two plus three equals five, rather than why did you do this or how did you do this, which is conceptual. So on a state level, we're probably going to be looking at that heavily and there might be some big changes coming. Something to think about. Can you tell me what Alex means?
I don't know what it stands for. It's the name of the math program.
It's like a remediation.
Okay.
That's not our acronym.
It's an acronym for the the programming.
Okay.
Yeah.
So RTI gives students extra help that are struggling. So how do we align the RTI program to a curriculum or is it part of that curriculum?
So tier one would be everything that I've talked about, like every student gets tier one.
That's all in the classroom.
Yep, tier one would be general classroom. Tier two would be students who need maybe more repetition, maybe another try at it in a different way. And so tier two would be students who have been identified as needing extra support, but not necessarily an alternate, like an entirely different curriculum. And so they're supplemental. Those would be our interventionists at our K, our elementary sites. And they, we do, like I met with the interventionists this summer and we try to keep them abreast of what's happening on the tier one side. But really, their expertise is if a student is struggling with fluency, for instance, in in language arts, they're not a fluent reader, there are specific interventions that can help assist with fluency in particular. So they get them into an intervention, provide that support, hopefully get them back into the tier one, work them off of the intervention. And so the idea would be tier two will hopefully slide slide back into tier one. If not, it could accelerate to tier three, which would be more of an intensive, more of an explicit instruction style. And eventually, if a student still is not successful, they may need an alternative placement like an IEP, an Individualized Education Plan.
Great. Good explanation, thanks. Moving on to social studies. So I'll just mention, I've mentioned it before, you've probably explored it, but Seres Discover is a gigantic database and it covers children's magazines, the resources there. It also gives teachers lesson plans. They're fully developed and they, I write into the standards and they're meant to. So I know that some of the elementary teachers are really struggling to develop resources. I would say get into Seres Discover and play because you can you can find
If I'm truly being honest, I think this year, we will try to just live through the studies weekly and make sure that they understand the content because there's a lot of content that they will have not taught before. And so I'm trying to reassure staff that we're just going to do this level. We're going to get as much as we can as we go through the resources that's been provided. But that would be a good next step if as we know what we don't know yet.
Like the studies weekly, it gives like a little history lesson. But many times, history can be read as a story, a poem, a play. So there there are other ways to reinforce and get students engaged besides just
So some of our English language arts work has been to incorporate social studies right within it. They're replacing some of their text units with social studies units or social studies concepts and things that align. But that's ongoing work. That's part of that ELA next step.
High school level. So the textbooks, are those online textbooks?
They have a classroom set and an online license per student.
Okay, so there's classroom set. And I mentioned before, a good source for buying Native American materials, hopefully somebody went there and spent some money because they have a fabulous collection. Okay, moving on to grades nine through 12 courses. So let's see if I can clarify. So on grade 11, it's not listed here, but we still do AP history?
Yes, we do.
Grade 12, there's AP government?
We've not been able to fill in AP government.
So that's gone?
We haven't had students take it.
Okay.
So when we do registration, they're able to register for it, but if we don't fill the class, then the instructor will teach a different class.
So it's missing, there's no. Grade nine and 10.
If they're able to register for it, there's not going to make the class run.
Okay. It's offered?
It is offered, yeah.
Okay, thanks. Grade 11, used to be a college prep US history. It's only straight US history now and AP history. That's it? That's the two choices?
Yes.
Okay. Grade nine, grade 10, it's straight world geography, straight world history. Are we offering college prep geography and college prep history for nine and 10?
We are not.
Not at all?
Those courses, the standards that made the different, the content that made the standards, the courses different are now all required of everyone. And so we have one geography, one world history.
Okay. No longer a second level course for those two. I've mentioned this before and I'm really deeply concerned about this. Because our students leave here and they go to SDSU or USD or the other colleges and universities in the state and they must compete against other students who have had much more in-depth courses, much more knowledgeable courses. Go right down the list. Sioux Falls, Jefferson, Washington, Roosevelt, Lincoln, O'Gorman, all offer AP human geography, AP history, modern for ninth and 10th grade levels. Aberdeen, world history honors. Brookings, AP human geography. Brandon Valley, AP world history. Harrisburg, AP human geography, AP European history, AP US history, AP government, AP psychology. T honors geography and honors world history. So we're supposed to be one of the premium high schools in the states. I'm really concerned that we are no longer offering advanced levels, world geography, world history. That's a deep concern.
So part of the challenge of those courses that we have to have students willing to take them and that this what happened with government is the same thing in those other areas. Students are really wanting the dual credit and we are not able to offer those in those areas. And so we haven't been able to fill the courses. What I am, when I looked at the numbers today of our courses, our sizing is much more equalized because of the changes that we made, like our geography sections are all reasonably kind of more equally sized because we don't have the split. We just didn't have as much interest in those courses. And so to be responsive to that and responsible to that, those are the choices that had to be made at the time.
I was still content that we try to compete athletically, but I think we should still compete academically as well.
I agree.
And I'm great to see you emphasize the writing component of of social studies, highly important. I'm hoping at least in the nine, 12 level and even seventh and eighth grade, that the English and social studies teachers are collaborating, talking, to bring up some writing. English language arts, science of reading, that's the big push coming from the state. I'm glad to see that we're starting to implement here.
We've been doing that. Like we do have a number of people who have been trained through the science of reading, the AIMS pathway training, the what's was the one called before that? We've we've got people who've done that and we've been leaning on them.
And for people that don't know, it's it's heavy on phonics and it has many other components as well. Word, word history, etymology, morphology and so on. So it has many components to it. For instance, instead of teaching letters first, teaches sounds, which is a different approach. So I'm excited to see science of learning coming. Lot of grief coursework here. I hope teachers really took advantage of all this. Couple of comments. As far as, because the social studies standards are being implemented, the K-4 report card is a standard-based, are you having to change some of the?
What we decided to do for the first year is, so they had kind of the, an ICANN statement that matched their major concepts that they used to teach. So we really condensed that for this first year that says, I can explore grade level social studies content at my grade level, just a catch-all place to for the teacher to write a comment about what has been learned during that quarter. And the teacher can give one score to kind of that body of work from that time, rather than trying to figure out what the specific skills would be yet. And so we know that that's probably a temporary placeholder, but it still gives a spot for kind of that common report.
Because there are so many standards, some standards are obviously more important than others or stronger emphasis. So it's just a weighing, measuring thing. Just kind of an observation, I'm from the baby boomer generation. And as I talk to my fellow baby boners, we're actually quite familiar with a lot of what's in here. So American education has dropped the ball. If you've talked to other generations, some of the concerns I hear from some of the younger generations, well, we didn't learn this. We didn't hear about this. And there's there is a big difference between what we used to teach years ago and what we're teaching now. And that's partially our own fault. This is kind of semi amusing, but you can make a strong case that when we dropped Latin from teaching in high schools, it's when American education kind of started to dip. Funny, I used to wear a T-shirt that said, if you can in Latin, if you can read this, you have an education. The only person in this building who could read it was the school secretary. Just an aside. Finally, I'm hoping that the board can have some future meetings where we talk about or get a preview of class sizes, class offerings and so on. So I'm hoping that in the future, we're going to look at some of that and hear what's either changed or what's worked on.
Okay, any other comments?
My question really was, I mean, with, obviously, there's a lot of curriculum work going on right now. It's been very curriculum heavy the last couple of years and this next next couple of years as well. But specifically with those social study standards, just with how, I'll just be honest, how much media attention and concern there's been and just it's kind of gotten politicized. Knowing that it is a big significant change for our staff and that's not just our staff, it's across the state, what's the pulse on staff? How are they feeling with this adoption? I mean, they've known it's coming, I understand that. You know, there's been time to prepare, but going into school starting next month, what's the honest assessment of?
I think they're nervous.
Yeah.
I don't, I'm not sure they know what to expect. We have drafted a letter, common letter, our committee did it for elementary specifically that says this is what your grade will focus on. It shows the different bands from world history and American history, lists the topics out and says you're going to see new things coming. Like we just were trying to preempt some of the questions that our families might have. But will they read it? Will they understand it? Will they care when the next topic comes up that they don't particularly like? That's what staff are worried about.
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
Have minutes of instruction had to be modified, like at the lower elementary, middle or intermediate middle school to adopt the standards?
Yes, yeah, it will affect those.
Okay.
Again, I think that goes to my comment, the difference between generations. My generation's pretty well versed in all of this and generations that follow have not been. And that that's where the the issues and the problems. And that's why the state board has decided that this this had to change.
I I understand the the sentiment. I think the challenges our students are coming across very differently. And so just trying to imagine how to support the needs, like many students in the past might have learned that at home or they had a lot of story background or they had a lot of nursery rhymes. They had a lot, like they just did other things before they got to school that then we could focus more on those pieces and we're backtracking on some of it as we try to support students' needs.
Yep, background makes a difference.
Yeah.
Yep. Socioeconomic and so on.
My comments would be more directed to the the state adoption. And Jean, maybe you got in on this when it was in motion, but I I'm a former history teacher and I I love history. But I'm looking seven, 12 and our curriculum, the state mandated curriculum, has three entire years of of history and it has one half of a year to study world geography. And if you look at a globe, there's a heck of a lot of countries out there. And some of them, like China and regions like the Middle East, are are pretty significant for us to know. And so I I'm really disappointed that the state has said, you're going to spend six times as much time, and American history's important. But I also think we're we're neglecting an important thing that are for our kids. And so it's the most radical change in social studies curriculum in in probably 50 years.
I would concur with that, that geography is highly important. And if you'll indulge me for a moment, if you follow the news, geography is highly important to understanding the world in the news today. There's a reason President Trump selected Alaska to meet with Russian President Putin. And it's a very solid reason why Putin was excited to meet Alaska. And it has to do with geography and history associated with Alaska. So unless you've got a deep background of understanding that, that in fact, United States and Russia are only two and a half miles apart. There are two islands, the Diomede Islands, and only two and a half miles separate those two countries. Russia used to own Alaska. We purchased Alaska from Russia. So there are some deep connections there.
Any other comments or questions for Tricia?
I'll just add a celebration. I think it's really great that we have folks that are willing to go to the Literacy Summit in Sioux Falls and showcase what we're doing. I'd be curious what they presented on when they were down there.
One was on vocabulary. I'll tell the story. Jen Brist was signed up to do a session and it outgrew the room she was assigned to and they had her do it on the big stage in the big conference room. And she had, it looked like, it seemed like a full house. It was hundreds that were in the room. So she went from having a session of maybe 50 to having probably 300. So good kudos to her. And then she and Anna Solom presented on mentoring and supporting first-year teachers and kind of that relationship between a coach and a teacher.
What was her large session on?
Vocabulary.
Vocabulary.
And she'd just speak volumes to the quality of things, so.
I know the ninth and through 12th grade teachers are struggling with how to approach vocabulary and spelling right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Tricia. Okay. My computer went dead. Here I go. Okay, 6.1 approval of bills. I'll entertain a motion.
I move we approve the bills.
Motion by Jean.
Second.
Second by Carrie. Questions, comments on any of the bills? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. 6.2 personnel.
A handful of resignations there. I would recommend your approval of those, please.
Okay, entertain a motion to accept these resignations.
I move to accept the resignations.
Okay, motion by Bailey.
Second.
Second by Rochelle. Questions, comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. 6.2.2 contract recommendations and addendums.
A handful, more than a handful of contracts.
I know, I'm signing.
We did, at the end of July here, fill all of our para positions. We do wait until later in the summer. We do wait until later in the summer with those positions to get them filled so that with those classified positions, sometimes they are a little fluid in keeping them filled or not. And so filling them as close to the start of the school year as we can, but we do have a few there for your approval and recommend your approval on those.
Okay, entertain a motion to accept the contract recommendations and addendums.
Move that we approve the contract recommendations.
Okay, motion by Rochelle, second.
Second.
Second by Bailey, questions, comments? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried, six point three, property. And six point three point one, consider the park and rec recreation facility agreement.
Yes, this is our facility agreement, which outlines the rental to accommodate the usage of park and rec facilities. This is a cost of fourteen thousand five hundred dollars for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. And this is with the city for the park and rec.
Okay. Entertain a motion to approve this facility agreement.
I move motion to approve the park and rec agreement as presented.
Okay, motion by Carrie.
Second.
Second by Jean, questions or comments? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried, six point three point two, change order number one on the Lincoln parking lot.
Yes, this is a change order to deduct by twenty-nine thousand three hundred and thirty-four dollars from the contract with Dunick to align with the original quoted price. The original contract was accepted a hundred and sixty-four thousand five seventy and the, the deduct brings the adjusted project price to a hundred and thirty-five thousand two hundred and thirty-six dollars.
Okay, entertain a motion.
I move that we accept and approve, consider change order number one as explained.
Okay, motion by Jean.
Second.
Second by Carrie, questions or comments? How often do we have change orders that reduce the cost of a project?
Not often.
Once in a while.
Okay, okay.
In exchange, we're just hoping the parking lot's done for when school starts.
They were working Sunday afternoon, I know, or Sunday morning, I drove by. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried, six point three point three, establish adult meal prices.
Yes, in order to remain in compliance with the USDA program guidelines, we are looking to change our price for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year to five twenty-five for lunch for adults and three twenty-five for breakfast. This increase is a federal mandate of the USDA guidelines, so we're looking for approval of that.
Okay, entertain a motion to reestablish adult meal prices.
I move approval of the reestablishing adult meal prices as presented.
Okay, motion by Carrie.
Second.
Second by Jean, any questions or comments? So if anybody does complain, it's, I mean, this is a federal requirement. This is what we have to charge.
Yes, yep, and it aligns with our current student prices as well.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, six point four, second reading of policies, and we have four of them.
Yes, there are no changes to any of these from the first time. So recommend for your approval. First two were review, first three, sorry, were review only with only a minor modification to DFA. So recommend for approval. And yet you have to do them separately.
We have to do them one by one, okay. So six point four point one, seek a motion to approve.
So moved.
Okay, by Rochelle, second.
Second.
Second by Bailey, questions, comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried, six point four point two, entertain a motion.
So moved.
Okay, motion by Carrie.
Second.
Second by Jean, questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, six point four point three, administration and policy absence.
So moved.
Okay, by Bailey.
Second.
Second by Rochelle, questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried, six point four point four, revenue from investments. Entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the DFA.
Okay, motion by Carrie.
Second.
Second by Jean, questions, comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, six point five, consider the fall athletic fundraising.
Yes, this is our annual request for the arrow cards to be sold by fall activities. And just a reminder for the board that the reason why it comes before you is that if we have students going door to door, that particular fundraiser needs to be approved by the board. So recommended for approval. Those are probably ready to roll here, I would assume, since practice has started today.
Okay, Mr. Boyne's probably has them for sale, it'll probably hit you on the way out. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve six point five, the fall fundraising activity.
I move we approve the fall athletic fundraising activity.
Okay, motion by Jean.
Second.
Second by Carrie, questions or comments?
Same price as last year?
What's that? Yeah, price?
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried, six point six, student enrollment requests.
Yes, we have three open enrollments for your consideration, recommend approval.
Okay, entertain that motion.
Move that we approve the open enrollments as listed.
Okay, motion by Rochelle.
Second.
Second by Carrie, questions? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
No thirteen twenty-eight tense tonight.
Okay. Seven point one, administrative reports.
Yeah, just a few items, just for board and public. Tomorrow we have our new teacher luncheon. That's at noon at the Country Road Barn. So a big thanks to Tim in the chamber for sponsoring that. The public is invited to come out and meet our new staff. That's always a good day. Then we have fall in-service on Wednesday and Thursday this week, so the thirteenth and fourteenth, and again next Tuesday, the nineteenth. And then on August eighteenth, we have our pre-parent teacher conferences from eleven to seven. With the first day of school being Thursday, August twenty-first. I have at your desk flyer on our open house for the Alan Mitchell Athletic Complex. That will be on Friday, August twenty-second, from five to six-thirty. We have the soda corral there, we have free popcorn, the student council's selling Cold Stone. And there are also concessions available, but the public is invited to the open house. They can come out and check out the locker rooms, the press box. After this open house, that, those will pretty much be off limits to the public. And some reminders about that, the track is open. There, there will be a walk gate on the north end. The turf is not available at this time. So we are asking people, we still want our community walkers and runners to be able to use the track, but the turf is not available for practices and those sort of things at this time. So just asking that people respect the posted rules and utilize the track. For that purpose, which was, you know, part of our rationale for keeping it open was that we know we had a lot of community worker, or community walkers and runners who utilized that. But the rest of the facility is off limits to the public. And we'd like to keep it that way, meaning we would like to keep the track available. But if there are problems and some things like that, we would have to make some considerations on that as well. And I thought I would, I've had a lot of questions about Alan Mitchell.
Okay.
And so just a little bit about Alan Mitchell for the board and the public. But Alan Mitchell was a longtime teacher and coach in the Watertown School District. Born in nineteen sixteen, he is a graduate of Watertown High School. He lettered in football, basketball and tennis and was an all-state basketball player in nineteen thirty-four. Alan then went to Dakota Wesleyan where he also lettered in football and tennis. Alan was a veteran who served the United States Army in World War Two. He actually provided intelligence in France prior to the D-Day invasion. Following his service, Alan Mitchell was hired as a staff member at WHS where he spent his career teaching biology and history as well as coaching football, basketball and track. Alan was a past president of the South Dakota Education Association and a board member on the South Dakota Retirement Committee, or South Dakota Retirement Board. Alan's wife, Lois, was a longtime elementary teacher in Watertown as well. And in nineteen eighty, the newly designed track was named after Alan across the street, which is the facility that we are, have been working on. And you can see that plaque on the rock right outside the main entrance. Alan and Lois had two children, Robin Mitchell-Feymer and Roger Mitchell. And as of now, we believe they are going to be in attendance for the home opener, which is on Friday, August twenty-ninth. So I'm looking forward to meeting his two children and showing off the, the facility to them. And then one last note for calendar items, we will, I'll have a September meeting, but the Watertown School District helps support, every year we have our Community Safe Committee, does a suicide prevention walk. This year it will be on Saturday, September thirteenth. And the Watertown School District is one of the supporting partners. So just wanted to put that out, that that is coming up here next month. And I'll try and remember it again next, in September at our board meeting too.
And I believe the, the Friday open house corresponds with Meet the Arrows football and Meet the Arrows volleyball.
Volleyball, yes.
So you can take in all three events.
You could do that, you come to the open house. I think Meet the Arrows volleyball's at six in the arena. And then the Meet the Arrows football's at seven-thirty back out at the stadium. And then a reminder to the board, when we're done, we'll adjourn and we can give you a little tour of the facility. And also before you disperse, Mr. Cruz is on the spot here for a board photo of the, the whole board, so.
Thank you. Seven point two, board reports from superintendent. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move you adjourn.
Motion by Jean, second.
Second.
Second by Carrie, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, we are adjourned at six fifty-one.